Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum? And then we'll ask you out.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. And at this time, if all counselors and guests would please rise, and we will ask our esteemed Madam Clerk, Maureen Feeney, to come up and put on a different hat in delivering our invocation. After the invocation, if everyone would please remain standing, and then we'll ask Counselor Baker to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Blessed are the just, for they have reward in indestructible integrity. Blessed are they who labor in the vineyards of the public realm, for they shall be remembered. Blessed are they who love their city enough to praise its strengths and criticize its weaknesses, for they shall be made wise. Blessed are public officials who are responsive to the needs of those, the least of the people, for they shall be deputies of the community. Blessed are they who serve the public good, for their reward is in being used. Blessed are the powerful who acknowledge their power as both a gift and responsibility, for they know the binding obligations of their bounty. Blessed are they who rebuke narrow self-interest to sustain the commonwealth, for they are the patriots the city needs. Blessed are they who rise above partisan loyalties, for they shall administer a public trust. And blessed are all people who seek justice in an imperfect world, for they shall be welcomed into the beloved community. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the republic, one nation.
If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please record Counselor Flaherty as being here. And now, communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket number 0380, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $1,365,434.46 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the City of Boston's Police Department to support the FY2016 Senator Charles E. Shannon Community Safety Initiative.
Docket number 0380 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 0381, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $40,000 from Boston College to purchase two Speed Alert display boards that will encourage safer driving habits within Brighton.
Chair recognizes the Chair of Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Counselor Andrea Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. We're looking to suspend the rules today and have this pass, but I'm going to defer to Counselor Siomo on this matter.
Counselor Campbell, this is simply a pass-through from the Boston College Community Benefits Package to fund certain projects in my district, and I want to make Sergeant O'Hara very happy today, the community service officer, D-14. He's been trying to get these signboards for many years, so I don't want to delay it any further, and I ask suspension and pass.
Thank you very much. Counselor Siomo. Madam Clerk, would you please record Counselor O'Malley as being present? At this time, Counselor Campbell moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0381. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket number 0381 has been passed.
Docket number 0382, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $2,000 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, purchase and distribute child passenger car seats.
Chair recognizes the Chair of Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I stand to ask for suspension of the rules and passage of this. This is a grant of $2,000. It's coming from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, and just as it says, it's to purchase and distribute child passenger seats. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. At this time, Counselor Campbell moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0382. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket number 0382 has been passed. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0383, notices received from the mayor of his absence in the city from 7:00 a.m. on Thursday, March 3, until 8:00 p.m. on Sunday, March 6, 2016.
Docket number 0383 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk?
Docket number 0292, message and order for your approval, a city council order considering the extension of certain powers and responsibilities related to Boston's urban renewal program.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development, Counselor Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a very robust exchange yesterday with the Boston Redevelopment Authority in a working session, of which most, if not all, counselors were present. And at this point, we were going to try and put together a report for today's, to put on the floor for today, but we decided that a more comprehensive report would be best filed by Monday at 10 o'clock, be in the package, so that next Wednesday, we can take this matter to the floor, discuss, debate, and approve. We heard strongly from the Boston Redevelopment Authority about how they are willing to concede on the length in terms of the extensions, and the report will reflect all, or if not most, of what we heard from them, as well as from our college. So I look forward to filing that report prior to Monday at 10. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Linehan, docket number 0292 will remain in the Committee on Planning and Development.
Docket number 0168, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $195,000 from the United Way of Massachusetts Bay and Merrimack Valley for the purpose of supporting the mayor's food security action plan through the hire of a food security action plan fellow.
Chair recognizes the Chair of Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Counsel Arianna Presley.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, we heard from our so relatively new Director of Food Initiatives, Tasha Baker, who explained how excited she is for this innovative partnership with the United Way. This grant will fund a three-year fellow to develop a plan to reduce and hopefully to completely eliminate food insecurity in the city of Boston. Through the duration of the grant, the fellow will do the following: identify a baseline, key indicators of food insecurity in Boston, develop and implement a metric reporting system, organize community conversations, build upon the model of the Dudley Real Food Hub to elevate individual and community narrative, identify strategies, synthesizing these neighborhood conversations to identify policy changes to address food insecurity, and mobilizing private sector. The fellow will also implement and track progress, which we care about, and this is, again, it's a three-year grant. I recommend this order ought to pass, so that we can get on with the very important and critical work necessary of planning and data collection needed to address and hopefully to end food insecurity in the city of Boston. I do want to thank Counselor Asabi George and Counselor Flaherty for participating in the hearing yesterday as well. And again, I recommend it ought to pass.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. At this time, Counselor Presley moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0168. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket number 0168 has been passed. And Madam Clerk, if you would read the next two dockets together, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0223, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Dr. Maisha Minter Jordan as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for term expiring January 15, 2019. And docket number 0224, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Frances Doyle as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission Board of Health for a term expiring January 15, 2019.
Chair recognizes the Chairwoman of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Counsel Arianna Presley.
Thank you, Madam President. Both of these individuals have made exceptional contributions to the health of our city. I am pleased to recommend Frank Doyle for appointment and Dr. Maisha Minter Jordan for reappointment to the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health. In the mid-1990s, Mr. Doyle helped orchestrate the consolidation of Boston City Hospital, ensuring integration of community health centers. Since that time, he has been running Boston Health Net, an integrated healthcare delivery system. Mr. Doyle has a wealth of health management experience, as well as sound knowledge of the city, personnel, and governing. Dr. Minter Jordan has been with the Dimmick Center since 2007, first serving as chief medical officer, and now as the president and CEO since 2013. Dimmick is the largest employer in Roxbury and the second-largest health center in the city of Boston. Dr. Minter Jordan has been successful in soliciting funding sources to expand programming, and was ranked 12 on the top women-led businesses in Massachusetts by the Commonwealth Institute. Dr. Jordan has already served one term on the board, helping to increase the age for cigarette sales, and playing a leadership role in the search and hiring of the new executive director for the Boston Public Health Commission. Both Mr. Doyle and Dr. Minter Jordan will be exceptional stewards of our city's health. We are lucky to have them. I recommend we confirm Mr. Doyle's appointment and Dr. Minter Jordan's reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Presley. At this time, Counselor Presley moves for acceptance of the committee report and confirmation of these two dockets. We'll vote on them each separately. So for docket 0223, confirming Dr. Minter Jordan as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission Board of Health, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0223 has been passed, and Dr. Minter Jordan has been confirmed. For docket 0224, all those in favor for confirmation of Frank Doyle, say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0224 has been passed, and Frank Doyle has been confirmed. motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Docket number 0384, Counselor Presley offered the following order for hearing to discuss Boston's plan for conducting early voting at the November 2016 federal election.
Counselor Presley, you have the floor.
I feel like I'm filibustering a bit here today. Thank you, Madam President. In May 2014, the Massachusetts Legislature, as you're all aware, passed a new law establishing early voting beginning in the November 2016 elections. The early voting period starts 11 business days preceding the election. Now, we are only required to have at least one early voting location open during normal business hours. Beyond that, the legislation passed by the state granted the city great flexibility in how it is to be implemented. The city should be doing whatever it can to promote voter participation. Now, in order to ensure the effectiveness and success of early voting, I've asked for this hearing to discuss the city's plan around the issues of voter education, locations, timing, and funding. Given the population of Boston, we need to look at the possibility of additional locations outside of City Hall to ensure that voters are able to vote without delay and for greater convenience. I mean, that's the whole point of early voting, in recognizing that people are leading more complicated lives, we want to make voting more convenient and more accessible. These need to be conveniently located and easily recognizable for those traveling outside of their neighborhoods to vote. They need to be readily accessible via public transportation, but also have parking. In addition, we need to make sure that these locations, if they are not typical polling locations, have accommodations for those with disabilities. The city should also be interested in providing weekend hours, or at least once during early voting, as well as evening hours for those unable to vote during normal business hours. Finally, we will want to make sure that we have equipped the Elections Department with the financial resources to successfully accomplish the intent of this legislation, which is to provide residents with a greater accessibility to the voting booth. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Counselor Presley for her work on increasing voter rights and access in the city of Boston and across the Commonwealth. Obviously, I think we all know how important this election is, as they are every four years, but this one, I think, is especially important, and making sure that we have high turnout here in the city of Boston and across the Commonwealth is important. You know, at a time when, across this country, other states, other municipalities are working to restrict access to the voting booth and making it less likely and less encouraging for high turnout, especially for folks who are not able to, who are working two or three jobs, who are not able to make the time sometimes during regular polling hours to be there. I think this is incredibly important. I want to, again, thank Counselor Presley for her work on this, and obviously commend the Legislature for passing this bill to begin with, so that we can do it. Would you please add my name? I look forward to a hearing and making sure that here in the city of Boston, everyone who wants to is going to be able to vote in the election.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Zachem's name. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, it's exciting to see what some other states are doing around the country to really make it easier, or not more difficult, for people to vote. In Oregon, for example, Governor Kate Brown enacted legislation that automatically registered every resident of the state to be a registered voter. They could then opt out if they so chose. But this is a very important first step, and I rise to commend the maker. I know we'll be hearing from Counselor Linehan on another important step as well, which I will also support. You know, we need to do what we can to make it easier for more people to vote. Everyone wins a more robust democracy, and it was heartening last week, when I voted in our primary, that there was a line. You know, obviously, people are active. We were hopeful that we can grow that activism to municipal races, not just the presidential. But it really shows this is an easy fix to allow for, to have multiple locations, to have people be able to vote early, because up until a couple of years ago, you could not vote early in the city of Boston or get an absentee ballot unless you could prove that you weren't going to be in your district on Election Day. And obviously, that can be difficult for people to do. So this is a great first step. I commend the maker, hope we can work with our Elections Department, and hopefully the Secretary of State to enact it. Please add my name and look forward to getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Madam Clerk, would you please add Counselor O'Malley's name? Please add Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Linehan, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Campbell. Please add the chair's name. Docket number 0384 will be referred to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 0385, Counselor Wu offered the following order, designating the City of Boston Law Department to address the open meeting law complaint and respond accordingly on behalf of the Boston City Council.
Thank you. So the city council has received an open meeting law complaint, and in compliance with the legal procedures, as well as the Attorney General's regulations, we are, as every body that receives a complaint, is required to air it publicly through a public meeting of that body, and then formally designate a respondent. So it is on the agenda, and the complaint is in each of our packets and has been posted publicly online, so everyone can review it. We can entertain any comments or questions on that, and then I'll ask for suspension and passage to vote to designate Corporation Counsel as the city council's respondent. They've already been working with Christine O'Donnell on this matter. Great, so at this time, I move for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0385. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket number 0385 has been passed.
Docket number 0386, Counselor Jackson offered the following order for hearing to review the Boston Public Schools' strategic partnership contract.
Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I rise to ask that we do an analysis of about 4% of our largest budget. $40 million goes to strategic partnerships and contracts. As recently as this year, McKinsey actually did a $660,000 look at the Boston Public Schools, and what we have back from them, Madam President, is a 30-page slide deck. That's about 20 grand per page. I want that information, and if we're going to have strategic partnerships, we need to do as they do in schools, we need to grade those strategic partnerships and have a determination as to whether or not the partnerships actually work. In addition, some of those partnerships actually happen in areas where we have a great deal of staff, such as in the human capital space. So we actually need to look at whether or not the internal staff of the Boston Public Schools is able to handle those partnerships. The flip side of that, Madam President, and I've seen in many of the turnaround schools, organizations like City Year that have done amazing work in actually helping to supplement what's happened at Orchard Garden School, what's happened at the Trotter School, and other schools. So I think it's really helpful for us to drill down on the partnerships that are working and look to expand those partnerships, and then if there are partnerships that are falling short of the desired goals, that we actually pull back from those partnerships, reinvest those dollars into a better space. So really look forward to doing an examination of where those dollars are going, and in particular, at a time when we have an estimated $50 million deficit in the Boston Public Schools, I think it's absolutely critical that we look at all of the funding and determine where those expenditures can be reallocated. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to first commend the maker on bringing this forward. I think it's important that we, as a city council, take a look at those contracts, in particular, and the work that's happening in our Boston Public Schools. I'd like to also emphasize the need to take a special look at duplication of services when it comes to those contracts, and what's already happening in our school system, how we're adding to it, how we're duplicating it, and also pay particular mind to services that are duplicated by consultants as opposed to hired employees. So I look forward, I'd like to sign on to this, and I look forward to participating in the hearings around this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Asabi George's name. Please add Counselor Presley, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor McCarthy. Please add Counselor Campbell. Counselor Flaherty. Please add the chair's name. Docket 0386 will be assigned to the Committee on Education.
Docket number 0387, Counselor Linehan offered the following order for hearing regarding the 2016 presidential and state election procedures that impact the most populated precincts in the city.
Counselor Linehan, you have the floor.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, Counselor Presley and I have voting on our minds, and it's good, because it's very topical in every media outlet that you see today around the presidential election. So it had me reflect back on 2012. And in 2012 specifically, we had very long lines at certain polling locations, and it was generally in the top 10 populated precincts. So some folks actually were in line for two and a half-plus hours to vote, which is ridiculous and should never happen. It's somewhat obstructive, and someone's right to vote. They need to put aside two and a half hours to make their way into the voter booth. And in some locations, people did not vote till after 10 o'clock. Polling locations are generally the same, and so there are issues that need to be addressed. I'd like to call the Elections Department down and to have this matter, discuss this matter now, because in Ward 6, Precinct 1, it's in the top five of the populated precincts, and there were lines that went two and a half hours long. There were also two other precincts at that location, and folks that were in line for Precinct 2 and 3 were in line with 1, and so folks could have walked in, voted in 15, 20 minutes, so there weren't enough people. There's a need to maybe, in a presidential election, to separate some precincts. And in some very large precincts, 51 is the largest, which is also in my district, there may be a need to separate the site, and so that half the folks in a precinct would vote in one location, and the other half in another. And all that would be with notification. The folks at those particular polling locations would have everybody that's registered to vote, but I may go, if it was in South Boston, South of First Street, and those folks who live north of First Street would go to a location down on the waterfront, or something like that. So there's plenty of room for improvement without having, you know, major change there, more procedural and practical applications, and I hope that the Elections Department and the administration will engage us in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I applaud the maker. I think this is absolutely the definition of equal versus equitable. If we know that there's going to be a long line someplace versus having the same number of people in place. I also think we should look back, when Governor Patrick was elected, there were precincts in the city of Boston where they ran out of ballots, right? So I really think that this is the proactive aspect of democracy that we need to think about, where we actually should plan for people who actually want to participate, rather than planning for folks not to participate, as we may have done in the past. And I think Counselor Presley and Counselor Linehan are really on to something when we think of this, and I hope someday that we will go ahead of our friends up north in New Hampshire, and that we have Election Day registration, and people have that opportunity to step forward and really exercise their most valuable franchise in real time, just as you can do when you get a bank account. You can actually open an account and take money out that day. I think our democracy should be one that actually is proactive in that approach. I'd like to have my name added, and again, compliments to the author and maker.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Jackson's name, add Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Siomo, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Zachem, Counselor Lamatina. Please add the chair's name. Docket number 0387 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0388, Counselor Wu for Counselor Presley offered the following order.
Counselor Presley moves for suspension and passage of docket 0388. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0388 has been passed.
Docket number 0389, Counselor Wu for Counselor Presley offered the following order.
Counselor Presley moves for suspension and passage of docket 0389. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0389 has been passed.
Docket number 0390, Counselor Wu offered the order for the appointment of ten.
Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 0390. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0390 has been passed. We have one late-filed matter, which in the hands of the clerk, which in the absence of objection, will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objection, the matter is added. And Madam Clerk, if you would, please read the late-filed matter.
And would you also like me to read?
Yes, and please read. Yes, and please read the corresponding number from the green sheets.
Thank you, Madam President. In the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation, Counselor Salvatore Lamatina, Chair. Dear councilors, the Boston City Council's Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation, to which was referred the following docket, number 0136, order for hearing regarding the inconsistencies in commuter rail fares and the effect on local communities. This matter was sponsored by Counselor Timothy McCarthy and Counsel President Michelle Wu, and referred to the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation on January 13, 2016. The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation held a well-attended public hearing in the High Park Community Center on March 2, 2016, to take testimony and consider the same. Based on the information gathered and testimony presented at the hearing, and having considered the same, respectfully report that the matter, docket number 0136, be placed on file and that the attached resolution be adopted. And if I may, Madam Clerk, Madam President, on page 4 of 7 of the green sheets, in the Committee on Parks and Recreation and Transportation, docket number 0136, which was sponsored by Counsel McCarthy, referred to the Committee on 113, 2016, a hearing on 32, 2016, is now being placed on file pending a vote on 39, 16.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation, Counselor Sal Lamatina.
Oh, no, no, no. Wait. He's the chair. It's Parks, I'm sorry. I want to refer this matter to Counselor McCarthy, since I was ill that day, and he chaired a meeting for me, so thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to thank Counselor Lamatina. He gave it a really good effort to try to get halfway across, well, all the way across the city, from his home to High Park that night, and he was not feeling well, and I could attest to that. Counselor Wu and I had this hearing on March 2, and there was well over 125, 150 people at this meeting, very concerned. I want to thank my friend and colleague, Counselor O'Malley, for attending that meeting as well. Since we had this hearing, the MBTA has come out with a 9.2% increase, and I think we could all argue on this floor, actually, I don't think we'd argue at all, that the Boston city residents are the ones who are getting hurt the most with this increase. The focus of this meeting was on the zones, especially in High Park, 02136, my hometown. There's three different fares to get to South Station. In Rosendale, it'll cost you $4.25 to get to South Station, but it'll also cost you $4.25 to get to Providence. So distance is not the issue. We have parking lots that are 30% full every given day because they charge $4 to park, and nobody parks there. Instead, they park in our neighborhood. So even though we don't have any jurisdiction at all regarding the MBTA, this resolution can be a powerful sounding board for our citizens, especially in the southwest section of the city of Boston, to remind the MBTA that this body will continue to look at what they're doing and the procedures as they move forward in the drastic changes. And Governor Baker is focusing on the MBTA right now, and I believe that he's got a pretty good pulse of what's going on over there, which is a drastic change of the last 10, 15 years. I think this is a message to the MBTA that we're going to continue to focus on them, so I urge that we adopt this resolution today.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. At this time, Counselor Lamatina moves for acceptance of the committee report and adoption of the resolution. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. So docket, the first late-filed matter has been adopted, and docket 0136 has been placed on file. At this time, would anyone like to remove a docket from the green sheets? Seeing no requests, there is one late-filed matter for the consent agenda, which in the absence of objection, will be added to the agenda. Hearing none, the matter is so added. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The consent agenda has been adopted. And at this time, if all councilors and guests could please rise, as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Asabi George, Gina Michelle Freed. For Counselor Lamatina, former First Lady Nancy Reagan, Louisa Greco, Laura Viera, Santo de Prima, Nicole Han Rafter. For Counselor Linehan, Deborah Kenny. And for Counselor O'Malley, Bridgette V. Morris. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and we are scheduled to meet again Wednesday, March 16, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of German say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, council is adjourned.